This first item, E1, is the Economic Development Public Hearing. We're going to hear a report from our staff and then we're going to open the public hearing, and council may take action after the public hearing. Mr. Goff, our downtown manager, will present this item. Mr. Goff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight is not the consent agenda or recognition or public speaks out, but it's a public hearing on an economic development proposal for the downtown. And this is part of our ongoing effort for the last year and a half to really work on revitalizing the downtown, both with public, strategic public investments, but also strategic private investments. Specifically tonight, we're asking that the council consider and adopt a resolution that would provide for the acquisition of property at 110 East Park Street and the execution of a purchase and development agreement for the sale of that property and two other properties that the town owns for economic development purposes. And now I'll take a few minutes and go through and just talk about what the proposal is. And the purchase and development agreement is available if people would like to see the details, but I'll give you a summary of it and make a few comments as I go through this The town will purchase the property located at 110 East Park Street. Now I'll have a site plan, and I'll show you that in a second. And we'll combine it with existing town property to create a 1.04 acre site. Memento Mori, which is Colin and Deanna Crossman, will purchase these three lots, the one acre, located at Park and Academy from the town of Cary. And they propose to build a boutique hotel. And I'll show you in a few minutes what a boutique hotel might look like in downtown Cary. Will be approximately 46 rooms. I know in the staff report, I indicated approximately 48 rooms, and I guess approximately 46 is still close. I've been pushing to get as many rooms as possible in the hotel. Apparently, the maximum number of rooms in the hotel is 44, and there are two single-family houses that could be additional rooms. The purchase and development agreement will provide that the hotel will operate for at least 10 years after completion of construction. The purchase price that the Crossmans will be paying is $951,000. And how did we arrive at that number? There are several different ways that we could have determined what is the value of that. What we are recommending is that we use the average cost to the town of Cary that we expended to purchase the 13 acres. As you know, some sold for higher than, this is $21 a square foot. Some properties sold for, we bought for higher than that, some was less than that. Instead of trying to reflect the individual properties and their value, we decided to use the average purchase price for the 13 acres. The developer will pay the town this purchase price over 15 years at a rate of interest of 6 percent. Now, there's no prepayment penalty, so they could pay this back early, but it is set up for a 15-year seller financing at 6 percent. The town will also sell to the developer for a nominal amount, two historic houses, the Waldo Root House that's presently on the 13 acres, the town site, and the Maithen House that's presently on Academy. And we will require the Crossmans to restore the structures on their site, on their land, to the Secretary of Interior Standards. We also are committing, the town of Cary, to serve as a borrower from HUD and lender to Memento Mori in a Section 108 loan. And a Section 108 loan is a federal program that is intended to spur economic development. So it's a perfect fit. You have to generate X number of jobs, and that determines how much you can borrow from the Housing and Urban Development Department. In this case, we're looking at $1.4 million that the Crossmans through us will borrow from HUD. The last sort of part of the proposal is, we have also committed the town of Cary to do certain pre-development site improvements for the future hotel. They include removing the existing buildings on the three lots, rough grading of the site, relocation of the Waldo House and the Maithen House to their property. They will provide the foundation, they'll do the restoration, but we will move the structures to the property. And we will do the public streetscape improvements on Academy and Park, consistent with the policy that the council said a year and a half ago, that for new development downtown, the town would do the public improvements in the right of way. So let's take a look at the site plan. This shows you in blue the land that we presently own, and the purple is the 110 East Park that we're proposing to purchase. This gives you a little different view, and I think this is a good one. The area in yellow is land that the town presently owns. You can see two parcels that we do not own to the east, to the right. And the two parcels in purple are the historic houses that we're not intending to purchase. So the acquisition of this third property, 110 East Park, provides a strategic, even if we, for some reason, the hotel proposal doesn't go through, I think it's still a worthwhile acquisition and very strategic. I should also mention that the existing building on the land that we do own, sometimes referred to as the Dr. Thompson Building, has two tenants. And we have made, I've been working with them for several months now to find a new location for them, because they have a lease with the town. And we have also provided in the purchase and development agreement for an extension of the timeframe if we need to respect their lease. So bearing down a little bit more to the site plan, you can see the hotel, you can see the Waldo House and where it'd be located, and you can see the Maithen or Maeton House and its location. The intent by the Crossmans is to develop 44 rooms in the proposed hotel, to use the Waldo House as a guest facility as well, so that's 45 rooms. And they intend to live in the Maithen House. So again, from an economic development standpoint, there's 46 rentable units, but again, the Crossmans are intending to live in one of those. And if I can go back just a second, a couple. You can see in this diagram that part of the proposal is that they will get access to their service area through property that we presently own. I just wanted to make, and you can see that a little bit in this drawing as well. So, some questions, some issues that I've heard or I've raised as I've thought about this, because we've been working on this for several months. And a big one is, what if the hotel can't get financing? Important part of even trying to get financing is this agreement tonight. The bank wants to know, do you have a deal with the town of Cary? And what is the components of that deal? But if for some reason it doesn't work, I still think the purchase of 110 East Park is worthwhile for the town of Cary. It really does provide continuity along Park and a better exposure to the Park, future Park, of the two lots that we presently own, Dr. Thompson's office building parcel. So I think it's worthwhile, but we are paying a premium for that third lot. It does work out financially, I think, for the city, it works out financially for the town, because of moving the two historic houses to that location. As you may recall from the previous slide that I showed you, the two historic houses are on that third lot, the 110 East Park. Having the Crossmans improve those and having, restoring them to Secretary of Interior Standards, and assuming that the town would do that if they didn't, it's about a $300,000 net gain for the town. So I think that, you know, is part of the consideration. So a second question I had is, during construction, you know, what happens if there's a problem? And I know during construction, there'll never be a problem, but let's pretend for a second that there might be. One of the things that's important, I think, to remember in this is, the town of Cary is not involved in a subsidy. This is not a subsidy to the Memento Mori or the Crossmans. This is a real estate deal. We're doing a seller financing of our land, we are working with them for a federal loan program. The total project cost is somewhere around $9.5 to $9.8 million. Of that, $951,000 of that will be the seller financing part, $1.4 million will be the HUD loan program. The Crossmans are putting $1.2 million of equity into the project, and they will seek bank financing for $5 to $6 million. Later on tonight, you'll see another great economic development project for downtown, that's the Downtown Theater, the Cary. Both of these are important, but I think this has real significance. One of the comments that I made when I first came here is that success will be defined in a couple of ways. One is having a shared vision for downtown, two, creating something unique downtown, but three, getting private investment downtown. The theater is good, it's going to be great along Chatham, but this is a good example of private investment in the downtown. And as I said, I think it's a straight real estate deal, and we are facilitating that deal. So during construction, the loan to value, that's probably the peak time where the loan is the most vulnerable, if you will, and the value the lowest, because it's under construction. The, I think the real answer to this is that the bank is very careful about its $5 to $6 million and how they release the money. They don't write a check for $6 million, you know, day one and give it to you. They give you construction drawdowns, and so they're going to be monitoring their money as the construction occurs, and I think that's a great guarantee, actually, for the town and its value. The third point has to do with that as well, and that's subordination of our mortgage, our seller financing. In order for a bank to loan money, we have to subordinate our position in recovering our money. So we're not in first position, the bank loan will be first position. We're in second and third with the HUD financing and with the seller financing. And again, when you look at the overall value of the project, $9.5 million, we're actually a fairly small part of that, but an important part of it. But in order to make this work, that subordination, we feel, has to occur. The last one, and I got some, there's a couple, and I have questions about this, is, one, why in downtown Cary? And they say that's sort of looking around and saying, you know, downtown Cary is not Chapel Hill, it's not the hotbed of activity. And I'm going to invite, if it's appropriate, council, mayor and council, I'm going to invite the Crossmans at the end of my presentation to talk a little bit about why they chose downtown Cary. But there's a couple of things that I would mention. One is, this is a little different hotel. Normally, a hotel would not go into a downtown until the downtown is successful, or at least on its way to being very successful. And we're in the early stages. If this were a franchise hotel, and I've talked to a few that have talked about or looked at coming downtown, and it's not far enough along for them, what the Crossmans are proposing is a very unique kind of facility, that I think they feel this is the appropriate time for them to invest in our downtown revitalization. The other thing I would mention, that if for some reason the Crossmans leave the picture at some point in the 10, 15 years, we have agreement in the purchase and development agreement, the PDA, that it will continue to be operated as a first-class facility. It'd be built as a first-class facility and will continue to be operated as such. Okay, so let's talk about the more fun part, the hotel itself. As I said, the hotel will be designed as a first-rate, first-class facility, the owner will seek to secure AAA four diamond status. They presently operate the King's Daughters Inn in Durham, and that is AAA four diamond status. And I have some pictures, actually, of it in a second. The building will be designed to complement and support the Cary Historic District. As you know, we in Cary are very fortunate to have a national historic district, that the Thompson Building is part of it, so a portion of this hotel will be in the district. We would like to work with the Friends of Page Walker and the State Historic Preservation Officer to see if we can expand that district to include the Waldo Root House and the Maithen House as well. I think it's going to make, just, it's really going to complement our existing district. As I said, the total cost of the project is estimated to be $9.5, $9.8 million. It'll be two and a half stories. I say not to exceed 40 feet, they've talked about 35 feet or so, which is about the height of the Ogle House. It'll be Georgian brick exterior, and I'll show you a conceptual of that. I've talked about the rooms, and I will ask the Crossmans to talk a little more about this, but it'll have a historic feel, green technology, they'll pursue LEED certification if the budget allows, and it's going to be 1920s Art Deco decor. And again, I'll show you some pictures. And the rates are $200 to $350 a night, room rates. And, I mean, I'm going to come back to that, of why they think that that's appropriate for this area. So you can read the amenities, probably better than I can, but it's going to be a boutique hotel, it's going to have full hot breakfast, they're looking at also having restaurant service, since they'll have a commercial kitchen, they'll have a high-end bar, and I'm trying to sort of figure out what a high-end bar is, but a high-end bar that will be part of the hotel but open to the public. You can see the other aspects, amenities of the project. So conceptual rendering, and take this as first blush, if you will. This is really to look at the massings or the approach, get the scale of the building. There'll be more detail, and they'll go through our normal Town of Cary site plan design review process. So there'll be plenty of chances for public involvement, comment. They've been very active of going to the Friends of Page Walker, and I'm sure they, we will be taking the more detailed plans to that group as well. So this gives you a back and side elevation, and if you remember the site plan and its location, this terrace actually will look out over the proposed park. And that's why that other property is so critical, because with only two lots, the original proposal with the land that we presently own, the connection to the proposed park was like 10 feet or so. This really opens it up and makes the hotel not intrusive, but part of our open space area. So this is the existing King's Daughters Inn, and part of our, sort of, part of my test or my, what I want and what we'll be looking for in the Cary Hotel. And by the way, they are thinking of calling it the, they're calling it the Maeton, we call it Maithen, but the Maeton Inn, because they like the name, they like it associating it with the history of Cary. So this is some of the internal interior furnishings, the common areas, you can see this. And these pictures actually don't do justice to what it looks like when you go there. I know some of you have been there, and I would invite all of you to go and visit. Guest rooms, each, there are 17 rooms in the present hotel, again, there'll be more than twice that many in this one. In the King's Daughters Inn, each room is designed separately, probably won't be the case here, but each room will have a, its own personality. So this will really be not your typical franchise hotel, where every room looks pretty much the same, whether you're on the first floor or second floor, and whether you're in Cary or Scottsdale, Arizona. I'm just trying to think of another town, I couldn't think of one, but this is more pictures of the interior. Okay, let me summarize. The town-county revenue from the hotel, including sales, occupancy, and property taxes, is approximately $131,000 a year. The town property tax is approximately $32,000 a year of that 131. The one-time savings to the town for restoring the Waldo Root and the Maithen House is approximately $300,000, and I think that's conservative. I used $100 to $125 a square foot for an estimate, which is about right for just restoring the house. But remember, they're putting it on land that they're buying from us. So if you add the land value, it's probably closer to $400,000 plus. Payments over 15-year term of the purchase money loan, as seller financing for us non-lawyers, for the land would be $1.6 million. And again, if you think of what we get as return on our money presently is, I'm sure, less than 1 percent. So it's a market rate, we intend it to be fair market rate, but for us, it's also a nice bonus. And as I said, they can repay it or pay it back at any time. And we are deferring the interest payments or the payments for the first four years. So the 15-year note will be paid over 11 years, but even if they prepay in year five, they will pay us the interest that's accrued for the first four years. So I think financially, this is a, again, a real estate deal. The boutique hotel will strengthen the character of Academy Street. Sort of imagine, we have the Cary Arts Center at one end of Academy, we're going to have the new theater, Ashworth Drug and Chatham Street Commercial at the other end of Academy, and this is midpoint. This will really be a bridge between those two. It will provide upscale accommodation in the downtown area, supporting the Cary Arts Center. It'll also, and this is, I think, a conservative number, generate over 8,200 room nights a year. So imagine having 8,200 room nights a year generating, and these will be people that'll be there after 6 o'clock at night, not during the day, after 6 o'clock. And also then add the number of people that will be going to the new Cary Theater, 180 people per night, and add that to the number of people that go to the plays at the Cary Arts Center, and we start getting a little bit of a nightlife downtown. But more importantly, we start getting people downtown that will generate other activities downtown. The restaurants that close early will have more customers to choose from. So again, this is intended to be an economic development proposal. The hotel will be built to Cary quality standards, and I think importantly, provide a unique facility in the Raleigh area. Think about this kind of hotel and imagine, is there anything like that in Wake County, in the Raleigh area? You know, in Chapel Hill, they have, what's the one on Franklin, the one on Franklin Street? In Durham, they had the King's Daughters Inn. In Wake County, there really isn't anything quite like this. And if you look at downtowns around the triangle, the Raleigh-Durham area, how many downtowns have a hotel in their downtown? Raleigh does, Durham does, Chapel Hill does. I'm hard-pressed to think of another town, so I think this will be a great benefit for us in leading the way to revitalization of downtown. So with all that said and done, the staff recommends approval of a resolution authorizing both the acquisition of 110 East Park Street and the conveyance of the three lots and two houses through a purchase and development agreement to Memento Mori LLC. And with that, Mayor, if I may, invite the Crossmans to come up and say a few words. I think that would be good.
Please. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us tonight. I'll try to be brief, and then we can answer any questions you might have. I just wanted to say first that we've really been impressed by the vision and the passion in downtown Cary, and we've really been, we really enjoyed getting to know everyone, and are excited to be a part of the community, if you guys are good with that. And we also think that Cary needs and wants and has room for a property like this in downtown. It's very unique, it's very, it's modern but respectful of the historic nature of the area, and the younger generations, this is becoming much more popular, this type of a boutique property. They like more individuality and more character in a property, so we think this has a long time for a lot of success. We also would like to contribute to the vibrance of downtown. We think you guys have a great plan, we think it's going to be a huge success, and we would like to be a part of that. And we give people an excuse, the suburban neighbors of downtown to come to downtown, you know, give them a little nightlife, a little, have their families come, then they'll come, and then you'll get that extra, you know, contribution of the suburban neighbors. Trying to answer all of Ed's questions that he said. We are, we feel strongly in being good neighbors and important community stewards in our business, and we would do the same here as we have done in downtown Durham. We want to be active in the community. As Ed mentioned, we've talked to the Friends of Page Walker very early on, and also they've seen almost this final plan. We want to continue those conversations with them. We also have met with the Cary Chamber of Commerce, the heart of Cary, all the neighbors in the immediate vicinity, we've made contact. We haven't had long conversations with all of them, but everybody who's wanted to get to know about the project, answer all their questions, and we've had a really great response. And we also learned about the Cary Visual Art nonprofit today, and the, I didn't, we didn't know there was a proper public art coordination, so we're really excited to be a part of that, too. We think we can, you know, have a nice corner lot with a beautiful piece of land for some art. So in terms of the decor, it's not going to be 44 different styles, because I couldn't ask front desk staff to do that, but there will be six or seven different flavors of rooms, we call them. So we'll have more traditional, more, you know, youthful, but there will be a good mix, so there'll still be different, there just might be four or five of the same kind, but they'll still be, you know, unique. And we also believe very strongly in green technologies, so we will, Ed showed the list, we'll do as much as we can. We're hoping that our geothermal testing comes back, so we can have geothermal heat pumps, which will be really exciting. So if those tests come back well, we'll do that, so, yeah. There's, I think that answered all the questions Ed said I was going to touch base, so we'd be happy to answer yours.
I think it'd probably be better if we do the public hearing, because that might generate more questions and then bring you back up.
That'd be fun.
If that'd be okay with everyone, okay? So hang tight, and we'll do the public hearing, and we'll ask you more questions.
All right, thanks.
Thanks. Ed, do you have anything to add before we open the public hearing?
Just one comment that I forgot to introduce, Dave Brown, who's been our special counsel working on this, and he's sitting next to me at the table. And Dave is an attorney with McNair Attorneys and has been invaluable in doing this. The other thing I would mention is that this is the start of the process, and I can almost assure you, from going through many of these in other cities, we will be back to you with amendments. I want, things will change as we go through, but again, in order to start the process, we have to have a benchmark, we have to have a starting point, and that's what we're doing tonight, so, thank you.
Very good. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing and invite the first speaker forward at this time.
Good evening. My name is Bob Myers, and I'm with the Friends of the Page Walker Hotel. And I'm here tonight to tell you that the Friends of the Page Walker are in full support of this project, and just wanted to make a few comments. First, this is, this is great news for the Dr. S.P. Waldo House. This house wouldn't be there today if it wasn't for the appreciation that the Methodist Church had for Cary's historic properties. And rather than tear the house down, they offered it to the town. And then through the efforts of the Friends of the Page Walker, the town staff, and Capitol Area Preservation, and the church, we were able to save the house and move it to where it sits today. So this is just the culmination of that effort, and we're really excited about that. It's going to be a great use for the building. This is good news for the Maithen House, another property that potentially could have been demolished. Relocation is never the best choice for historic preservation, but it's certainly better than demolition, so we're excited also about the new use for the Maithen House. And we also hope that moving the Maithen House maybe makes it a little less likely that the Ivy Ellington House is, has to be moved, so a second positive there. And the project itself is a great project, great for downtown Cary. The height restrictions and setback and everything is going to make it fit in very well with the historic street. with the historic street state of Academy Street. So, and, and the Grossmans are, are great friends of preservation, the Crossmans, I'm sorry, are great friends of historic preservation, so couldn't ask for better developers. So, in summary, you know, we're very much in support of this project and hope that you'll see it through. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Andrew Schaefer. Thank you for taking the time today. I'm a resident of downtown Cary. I live at the corner of South Harrison and West Park. So, there can't be, I was trying to count on my hands today, ten, ten residents between, between me and the proposed hotel. My family and I, longtime members of the Cary First Methodist Church, very active in that. I run a market research company that's run out of the building next to MMI. So, very vested in downtown Cary. And I think, while I don't know what a Section 108 loan is, I'm looking for, Ed was saying, a starting point. And the word that came to my mind was a catalyst. And if this is the catalyst that downtown Cary needs to, to continue the downtown improvement, then, then I'm in full support, and that's why I'm here tonight. So, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I would invite the next speaker forward. Anyone else to speak at this public hearing? Anyone at all? I see no one. I'll close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions. Hold on. Yes, sir?
I have no questions, but I just want to emphasize what we heard from Bob Myers.
Okay.
I've been involved with the Friends of the Page Walker for many years now. And as you well know, when the Friends of the Page Walker hear about historic houses moving or being altered in any way, the Friends may not always be very friendly, me included. In this case, for the Friends of the Page Walker, not only to be okay with this, but to heartily endorse this plan, there must be something very right with it. So, so it's definitely a yes vote for me.
Okay. The staff's recommendation before us tonight is the adoption of a resolution authorizing and directing, one, entry by the town into an option agreement for the acquisition of property located at 110 East Park Street. And two, entry by the town into a purchase and development agreement for the sale and purchase money financing of properties located at 301 South Academy Street, 106 East Park Street, 110 East Park Street, and the subsequent sale and purchase money financing by the town of the purchase price for that property. Now, we're ready for motion.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just a quick comment. I would agree with all of the speakers that both spoke before us. I wish the Crossmans the very best in your endeavor. Yes, this will be a catalyst for downtown, but it's but one piece in a pretty big puzzle. I don't know that there's any one thing that we're doing or trying to incent or encourage that's that silver bullet, but it's, it's all of the things that we're all trying to accomplish that's going to make downtown Cary one of the greatest places for, for downtowns in the area. It's also a great example of a public-private partnership. I mean, these are things that we talk about, you know? The town cannot do all of this by ourselves, and nor should we. I mean, a lot of what we do is to encourage private investment, and I think this is a, is a smart way to go about this. Very little, if any, exposure to the town. You know, if the Crossmans go out of business or it doesn't work, well, we end up with a nice fancy hotel in downtown. So, I wholeheartedly support the request. And again, best of luck to you guys, and thank you for choosing downtown Cary. We know you could go anywhere in the region, and you chose downtown Cary, and we're very, very grateful for that.
Other comments or questions? One clarification point from the town attorney. There were two actions. We've included them in one motion. Are you okay with that?
They're all in the one resolution. That's fine. And I'll point out to you, the council members, the option agreement is in front of each of you for your information.
Okay. So, any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, and best of luck to you. And welcome to Cary.
Thank you.
I like the Maithon House Inn. I'm very much, I appreciate that you, your influence and, and the importance of historical, the historic property, and you chose a name that really represents where we've come from, and I really thank you for that. You could have thought of a name to go along with your own name. You know, you could have called the Crossman's House. But I really appreciate the effort that you're putting in to make this part of the community. So, thank you.
And I believe Mr. Maithen was mayor of Cary almost longer than anybody else in the history of Cary, just for...
Yeah, wow.
There you go.
All right. So, expect the Weinberg House.